Okay, mayoral come order. And we hold out five comes to people present. Okay, approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion for the announced and by sent approved the agenda. All those of you who say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion that approved the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Senator Sanders by now approved the consent agenda. All those of you who say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we're down to the action items.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
How good for a patient. Three bids.
Yes, this is the time and place having published public notice to take bids. This is the time and place that we will open them and announce them out loud. This one is from Snyder's Tree Service in Carroll. And the bid is an hourly bid of $120 an hour. This one is Gordon's Tree Service of Lake View, or of Lake City. I said that wrong. Excuse me, Lake City. Gordon's Tree Service of Lake City. And their bid is $125 an hour. This one is Hook's Tree Service with an address of Fort Dodge. They're the gentlemen who are sitting here with us tonight. And this is a bid of $120 an hour. And it says per truck and two men. is Goody Tree Service of Carroll. This one is $150 an hour. And the last one, the fifth one... is from Western Iowa Tree Services. At $77 an hour.
They're from one rate?
That's...
Pardon?
It's math. Isn't it?
Okay, we're open for discussion on this?
Have they all submitted the required... do they all meet the qualifications that we set for?
By placing their bid, they're telling us that they do. However, I do... before they're allowed to work, they will have to submit their certificates of insurance.
I got a question. These guys, they know how many guys you get, the number of trucks per hour, or what the other ones? Are they... that's what they'll do for, or is that per person or what?
Per... Per truck is...
No, you guys, I know what yours is, like I said. I'm wondering what all the other ones are. You know, I know what you're saying. You're saying you get you guys in the truck throughout, right?
It wouldn't make any difference if it's not right, Randy. See, that's how we structured that.
What they're saying, how many people are there to help makes a big difference. Uh-huh. But they cut trees if they have one more person, I would think. That's my opinion, really, I'm just... figure it out.
By the way they structured their bid and the way they wrote their bid, it's $77 an hour or $120 an hour. Period. That's what council is considering.
How much work do you think we have there? How many hours?
I have no idea, Big Joe. I have no idea. I'm not a tree trimmer person, so I can't even tell you. Some places gotta be double set. It's gotta be on one side of the line, and you gotta get on the other side. I have no idea.
Do we take into consideration the... I guess if they meet the standards, we don't care how long they've been in business or whatever. And not that that's what it's set down. I'm not coming from that angle. I'm just saying whether it's an established business or not, if they meet the conditions, we'll go as well. Okay.
Yeah, we didn't make that a term of the contract, that they have to have a certain business history or provide a certain number of references or any of those things.
I know Matthew has insurance through... Saint Ezra, through Renee.
Well, and whoever, before they begin work, will have to supply that.
Yeah.
Or at the time we execute... finally execute the contract.
And then, at least you and I did, Nancy, or you mentioned that you were gonna suggest it, that we put an overall bid on how much we're willing to spend this year. Do you... Did you guys have an estimate of how many hours it would take you?
We were guessing with three trucks, two men per truck, somewhere between six and eight days.
Twenty... Six hours?
Six and eight days.
Six to eight days.
Six is the least...
You've got... See, what I did before I opened the company was I worked for Aspen. When I did light clearance, that was... that's where I came from. You've got trees that are burning in the lines. I mean, there is serious hazard in there. It's... when I drove out your entire town, and I mean, it's been neglected. It's gonna take some time. I don't see more than ten days worth of work. That's gonna eight to 10 hour day. And that's running... I'll have two trucks trimming, one truck cleaning up behind me, and that's... that's... that's good. I've done light clearance for years. And it's been pretty neglected, so...
Sure, no. But so you're guessing... you decided, and you're guessing six to eight days, so eight hour days.
That's two trucks running, eight to 10 hour days, if I'm really trying to push through.
It'd be about 316 hours, right? Basically.
Right, and you're saying...
Probably. Yeah. So... And like I said, that's... I'm bringing in... I'd bring in three trucks to hammer it out real fast and not drag it out so that it...
Yeah, get done and get... yeah, because time...
Make sure you clear it.
Right. A lot of those... some of your lines run through backyards where we can't put trucks.
Sure.
So obviously, that's gonna be heavy work. Some of it may need to be climbed or used... or trimmed that way.
See, and I can't... as far as... like climbing, I can't put my time on that. It's a safer process, especially like if I've got a tree in the line. That's dangerous for me up there anyway. As far as we know, I'm very good at it. It's... that's about our estimate. About eight to 10 days.
Yeah. If Jerry can't give us some sort of idea, and I understand why he can't, we're just trying to figure out what's this total cost gonna be. Well, we've got the option to act on this tonight or not act on this tonight, right? That's basically what the proposal said. How much would that be if you... let's say they all took six to eight days?
Well, there's another variable here, because I think Jerry intends to do a lot of the cleanup, or at least the haul away, and work with them, so that would cut the cost somewhat. But if we're talking three trucks at $120 an hour and eight days at 10 hours a day is 80 hours, we're talking $29,000.
It would've been helpful to have the hourly estimate...
At their rate...
I mean, the total job estimate, time-wise, so that we...
However, you do have a bid that's $53 or $43 an hour cheaper, so that cuts your costs considerably.
Right.
Which is a huge difference. You know, there's not...
Yeah, but you don't... what you don't know on any of the other bids, other than talking to them, is how long...
Anybody that would... $120, how... scare me.
Well, I'm telling you... I'm telling you that we set out to hire a guy based on hourly rate, or a company based on hourly rate. Then it's up to council to say, "We're gonna spend $5,000, $10,000, $30,000." That's up to you. Kinda like we do with our street guy. He comes in, says, "My price is $275 a ton," and you said, "When you get to $10,000, quit."
So we had cap, took a cap on it.
See, and I base that, you know, when I... eight to 10 days. I can't necessarily say it'll take me 10 days to get it done, you know? I could fly through it and get it done in five. It doesn't... it just depends on what kind of problems I've run into. I saw a couple lines that were buried pretty bad back... back home this way. There's no way I'm gonna get a truck to, and that's the time consuming stuff. It's... I don't trust people to go up in a tree if they don't... basically, I like to do that stuff myself. That's what it comes down to. I do it safely.
It's very helpful to have a man assessment.
Taking that into consideration too. I don't know if Western Island Tree Service is a single man operation or not, but if you got two men at 120, you got one man at 77. You gotta take that into effect too. Two men can get a lot more done than one man. Yeah, but it's a single man operation. I don't know if it is. You know what I mean? That's one thing that you gotta take into consideration. Two guys are gonna cut a lot more trees, no wonder. So...
We did...
You know what I mean? I...
We need more information. This is ridiculous. Larry, give him my phone. Do you have the phone? Do you have your phone?
Yeah.
Is Matthew at the house?
A lot of them is just seeing what... not that they're... all the other tree guys.
Yeah, absolutely. And let's not base everything on...
I'm just saying that, but make it fair with him. Except for the other ones, they got two different people. Or besides Matt, what he's got. You know, that ain't fair.
Usually Ron helps them.
Well, I'm just saying, make it fair with him.
Right, if we have...
That's right.
If you don't overget for $120 an hour, or $125, or $150, it makes a huge difference. I mean, that per hour...
And it wasn't the reason that he bid so low, so he could... 'cause this is where he wants to be established.
That's understood.
Yeah.
I understand that.
He grew up here.
So that is whatever you want on party people, or something, that's what I'm...
You know, why do we go through all this for the... well, granted, I can't vote. But he's got the cheapest bid, and that's what we go on a lot of times with everything else. It's just ridiculous. I think we need more information, Cindy, honestly, because... Let's... We just delay it more and more. After another whole month, we delay it, and then it gets cold. I would suggest... Every year is delayed at least two months, seems like in this council.
Well, do you wanna make an educated decision or not?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
There's other things...
You're gonna have that then.
Justin, don't get loud, please.
Don't ride away and take personal to it.
I've had... I've had to do this a lot with this council.
So have I.
I know you have.
It's all... you know?
But there's a... there's one in... there's a catch in there. And I know it.
There always is.
Not with you, Justin. Just forget it, okay?
I'm just saying, for dollar for dollar, if we're getting two men per truck versus... I don't care if it's Snyder's, and they're only sending one man in a truck at $120 an hour. These guys are gonna get more done with two men in a truck than what one man in a truck's gonna get done. That's just simple math.
What would it cost if you did the hours at 57?
Well, Matt come in here with two guys, they're at 77 bucks an hour. That's still cheaper than anybody.
Yeah.
Right. If it was two guys. If it's with two guys, you're right.
But Ron...
I don't know this for sure, it's one of his...
Well, I said I could ask him right now. Well, but we need to quantify... we need to give everybody the same opportunity. That's what Randy's saying. They can't change their bid.
No.
No, no.
That's what we get.
But then that makes it cheaper, though. Then if we go back, then after you seal the bids, then it makes it cheaper, because this is the way you're doing it.
No, this is the...
It's not fair. Nancy's shaking her head too. It's not fair. Because I know who you guys... I know what you want and what you don't want. No, I... Yes, it is. Don't make that accusation. I'm not... I'm just taking fact, Jane.
I feel as well, saving money however we do it. They're gonna have the best spend.
Yes, I agree, Randy. Yes, I agree.
That's what I said.
I can't vote anyway, so I'm screwed, but I'm gonna voice my opinion.
I don't care about the vote, but I don't vote for your home, but you understand? The best buck spent is the best buck spent.
Well, this is the cheapest. Oh. And then just because he went cheaper doesn't mean that he's... that he... that you wouldn't trust him as a tree trimmer. He's been doing it for quite a few years. That is... that's not even an issue that we're talking about at this point.
My question was what you get per hour.
I agree, but even at $77 with two guys helping.
If it is two guys, you're right. It is worth it.
Ron helps him with things.
Hundred percent of the time. You know, we guarantee this, because... and these guys' bid said per truck, two men, guaranteed, 120 an hour.
Let's give everyone, all the bidders, the opportunity to do the same thing. Are we calling a special meeting? Jerry, you don't wanna put this off, do you?
No.
No. It's been put off and put off and put off.
Well, and the...
Let's call them right now. Yeah.
Where we're getting in the weeds is if we leave this room and the word gets out, everybody's gonna say, "We have two guys." Or the next guy says, "I'm gonna bring in three guys for that time." Once the bids are opened and they're announced, it's now public, and to do anything, to change anything, ruins that level playing field we were looking for.
Yes.
It's my opinion you need to look at these as they are. And you need to... I wish now I hadn't have said two men in a truck or anything like that. But I did you the courtesy of reading what was on the page. We set out, and our intention was to bid this by the hour, period.
We should've had the foresight to see that.
Yes.
We should've quantified the equipment that was gonna show up. We should've... we should've done that from step one.
Well, then, we need to take time and call them, so we can move forward with it tonight. Make a decision tonight. Because everyone's gotta have people helping them. Our lawyers coming in alone. Help. Our ads, and... that we could take it... we could take it under advisement. The ad that we published, that we could take it under advisement and give that. Now, that's... that's if we can get ahold of everyone, uh...
Do we have contact information for each one?
Larry, how does this work? You were mayor for 17 years. How does this work? What would you do?
Take the low bid.
That's... I think that's a legal way. Do we need to call an attorney?
Well, if you don't take the low bid, then you have to justify very firmly why you're taking a higher bid.
Yeah, 'cause what you do is you open the door for a lawsuit from the guy who is the low bidder, and then you have, you know, two of them at the same price. And one $5...
How long's the contract for?
One year, or whatever they determine.
Well, hell, in one year, you'll find out whether that person can do it.
You don't like them, then next year, and then you give somebody else, yeah.
But if you don't take the low bid, you're kinda skirting some...
Well, it's the lowest responsible bid, and there's no reason to believe that none of these people are responsible.
We never mention responsibility.
Nobody said that.
No, 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 I'm not... I'm not pointing a finger. I'm saying the law says the lowest responsible bid. And we have no reason to believe any of these are not responsible.
No.
So that puts you back to the lowest bid.
That's not what we're discussing.
Legally, it puts you back to the lowest bid.
Now, we are not forced legally to take the lowest bid. At this juncture, we even said in our request for proposals, that was published in the paper, we reserve the right to take it under consideration.
No, that's right. I'm not arguing that point. I'm saying what your criteria is...
Support me on that. You have a criteria.
Your criteria is lowest responsible. And if they're all responsible, then you have to take the lowest. I didn't say you have to do it tonight, okay? But you don't get to open this back up unless you reject everything and start over.
Well, that's not fair to anybody. I...
I wouldn't be that 77 dollars a tree. I couldn't do it for them. I'd be more on labor and...
You don't know the history of what's going on. So that's just... you don't know the history.
No, I know, but I mean, as to open it back up, I wouldn't revisit that, because I couldn't do it for that.
In matter of fact, I told him not to even put a bid in, because it was just stupid for this town.
Let's do it.
Nancy, I think it's more than permissible. I'd blower Justin, roll your eyes. That's what I told him, not to put a bid in. 'Cause I know how it goes. Cindy, now it is getting personal. Well, yeah, just get personal. I know what's going on. No. No. We do not have enough information in simple math. I know it's simple math, but you're also supposed to think along... If you don't know what you're... what you're buying for $77 an hour, you don't know if it's the cheapest rate. That is... that's true.
We know they know what you're...
That is true. They are nodding. Yes, that is true. And... and all I'm suggesting is you can take these four bidders... or five bidders and contact them for very specific information. You just... what are we talking about as far as hour per truck and men? And how many men come with that truck? So that we can make a simple, informed decision. And that will be fair to Matt, that'll be fair to everyone else.
If I remember right, Jane, the only person you can ask that question of is a low bidder. But all...
No, no, no. Procurement...
I might be wrong, but I...
Is there anybody been calling at the...
No, not tonight.
That's the way it used to be anyway.
What's the problem with $77 an hour?
That's what I'd like to know. I know what the problem is, but nobody believes me.
You bid $77 an hour.
Justin, knock it off.
You knock it off then. If you wanna make it personal, we can make it as personal as you want.
Oh, it's been that way forever, Justin.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, we know.
We've all been on the limelight at one point or another, so drop it.
You drop it. Put smiling.
I'm sorry, I have... it's fully the fight order, you guys.
It is. I'm gonna make...
You'll... Low bidder till fiscal year, end of fiscal year. And then next year, started July, we'd have this all done again. I mean, if it's...
Then we know what to put on there. That way we don't have any problems.
What's your suggestion?
No. I'm not gonna cave to that. I think... I would like to make a motion that we take the bids under consideration, we do some additional research, and if we need to call a special meeting, I think we're all up for that.
Okay, that way we can always say something. In all fairness, you can't really ask them what they're sending after everybody knows bids. I'm sorry, but you can't do that in all fairness.
No.
Because then they could jump in.
Okay, so but my point is, is our bid process was wrong.
It was wrong. It was wrong, but it's two...
It's a learned process.
Whatever you did that...
Now we know what to...
But in all fairness, we can't do it. We can't go out now and ask them. Sorry, you just can't do that. It's not fair. We screwed up ourselves. It's our script, not nobody else's.
I thought if we took the bid, we start over.
No, that's not...
No, I think we just need to make a motion, accept the low bid, go with what Justin said, and be done with it for this year. I think at a minimum, we need to put a lid on it.
I agree, a lid, because we've overspent so many things this year that...
I thought we did put on how much money this guy... what, 35, 5? I don't know.
That's a good one.
No, no, you have not set a dollar limit for this project.
That'd be the only other thing I'd say.
Puts that deal off, heard it, everything.
And do that in a separate motion, please.
I'll make a motion that... that we put an overall dollar amount cap on it for this year for $5,000. Okay, if you were thinking about hiring them, it would've cost... what was it, Nancy? $29,000?
To do our...
To do that whole...
I thought we needed done, yeah.
We're coming in, it's a agreement, everybody, let's just do it.
Yeah, and we don't have $29,000 to spend on this anyway, guys.
I know that.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a motion on this.
You got your first motion?
My first motion is...
She never finished. So we'll just...
Got interrupted. Okay, my first motion is that we put an overall dollar cap of $5,000 on the tree trimming contract.
Second.
Now, remember, for the power line...
For the power line. Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's the limit are you putting on it?
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars.
All right, we have a motion by Jane, second by Justin, that we put a $5,000 limit on the low bid. Have we accepted the low bid yet?
No, no, no. Keep that out of it. Her motion is that we spend $5,000 to power line... to do the power line trimming. That's the motion, to spend $5,000 on it.
Motion made, Senator, to put $5,000 limits. Any further discussion on the motion? I'll vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Cindy, you can vote on this one.
You did what? You voted?
That'll be okay.
You voted, right?
Yes.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye. Okay?
Now I'll make another motion to take the low bid.
Western Alexi.
Yep.
I'll second.
You made a motion to take the low bid of seventy-seven dollars per hour? Seconded by Justin?
Yep.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I think we need to add in the motion for a year.
That's what the contract's for anyways, you already have that, so... That's already in there.
And that's automatic to fiscal year, fiscal year, or what? Or year to date?
What dates do you want?
I mean fiscal year. That way we can align it with our budgeting.
Ending June thirty.
Yep. I think we need to do that to align it with our budgeting.
Is that okay with your motion, Mr.?
That's fine.
Okay.
Are we ready for the vote? I'll vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Opposed? Motion carried. Send you a...
Thank you guys for your time.
Hey, just, if I can, for future reference, next time you put out bids, you're gonna wanna ask for equipment list.
Yeah.
Because...
I agree. We need to quantify what we're getting.
Well, I mean, one person, or two guys with one truck can't do what three guys, or what two guys with three trucks can do.
Right, I agree.
So it becomes a time, time thing also.
You left your information, your contact information.
Yeah.
Also, another thing, working with the power lines, this part is, is equipment. Make sure that you can pass a dialectic test. You can't be up around the power line without it insulated. And also, you have to have a second person working around life power, you have to have a spotter.
Thank you guys for your time and information. Sorry about that.
Thank you. No, you're fine.
Okay, next time, may it enter the road trees. Right away.
The road trees.
Right away trees.
Right away, the, uh, the bushes.
So you refuse to pick them up?
No.
Nobody talked to him?
I talked to him.
What'd he say?
He had no problem with, with the city taking them out. Absolutely not. And, uh... And I said I would get back to him. And then I talked to Nancy, and I said, since, since we deem them dangerous, we call them dangerous, those shrubs, right? City already said that, okay? And when we call a tree dangerous, the city takes responsibility for taking it out. In this case, these are shrubs that are on the ground that could be cut off by Jerry and put the torgon on the top of it, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Yeah.
And it'd be a done deal. I said that to Nancy, and I hope it's okay if I tell, that Nancy agreed that that bumped it into a special category. And that...
Well, I, I agreed that I, I didn't disagree with you. Can we stop there, please?
Okay, all right.
Leave me out of the middle!
Okay. All right, anyway, uh, then I asked Nancy, I hadn't seen Jerry, and I asked Nancy if the bushes had been cut down. And she said no. That you wanted to revisit it. That, that whole, if the city calls it dangerous, and the city can take care of it, then letting the city take care of it. So, but I was still under the impression that we left it where it all had to be brought back up at the council table before they were actually considered dangerous. It was, I guess that one... Better. Oh, see, I never recalled that at the last meeting, that it was dangerous.
That was the whole purpose for the...
I understood that we were going to the homeowner. The homeowner went and do it. The homeowner had to find someone to do it. And at that point, it was supposed to be brought back to the city council, and then we would discuss whether... Here's what's on the table. And did Jerry take the shrubs out? They're totally okay with taking the shrubs out. I just want to just clarify, we didn't do antacrosis, and that was there for two years. And maybe we should have, did we ever declare it dangerous? I know.
Well, it was dangerous. You couldn't see, have stop sign. I brought it up to the meeting a couple times.
Like, how long ago were you talking?
Oh, not last...
Oh, every summer for the last two years. However, we did never agendize it. That's, that's the difference.
We did, but I brought it up at the meeting.
We discussed it at the end of the meeting in council comments.
You got some new discussion?
Huh?
You got some new discussion?
Well, you were here. Oh, yeah. Maybe you weren't at the meeting.
I don't remember.
Okay, okay, but their bushes were on the agenda as dangerous bushes, shrubs. My point is that bumps it into a category where the council says they have to come out. And in the past, whether it's a tree or the trees, dangerous trees, we, uh, we take the responsibility to take them out, just like we did on Shell sold property, is what I was referencing.
I had no problem with Jerry taking out, the city taking out those trees. But I wanted to make sure that the people that, that is...
On that property?
Yeah, it's gotta be fair. We have to somehow stipulate the fairness of it.
Well, it is, it does bump it into...
Deem it deemed dangerous.
Deem dangerous. Then the city takes control of it and responsibility for it.
I agree, fair, you can take them off.
Or lock trees that are split.
Well, if there's something that moves to be deemed dangerous, you're saying that's, that's...
Yeah.
Somewhere, just, and just for example, well, hypothetical isn't helpful right now. But, uh, I would say that, you know, we need to look at each individual case. If it's a dangerous situation, then we need to be made aware of it and decide if indeed it's something that the city needs to take responsibility for.
Trees, trees, bushes, actually, none of those trees, bushes, bushes, bushes.
Warming.
It's warming.
Exactly.
While we're on the street thing here, okay, whoever get in here and trim trees. There's some dead branches up there. Am I supposed to go through the council to get these things taken down?
Dead branches, where, Jerry?
Well, there's some big ones that, up there by, uh... My brother's house, down that street, there's some big branches. I mean, I gotta keep coming...
Are they, and they're not power line branches?
Nope, there is.
Well, I guess...
But they're a city tree.
Yeah, but see, we've moved on from that. But Jerry, if you're saying to us they're dangerous, then you need to identify those trees and let us know. And then we'll talk about it, and if they're dangerous, the city will take responsibility for it. If they're not, the homeowner, first of all, needs to be alerted that, hey, you need to, you have the responsibility.
Well, that's, that's what I want to know, because when these people are asking me, I mean, what we used to do is kind of changed.
I know.
So what, now I gotta tell them they're responsible to take those dead branches?
Well, technically, they've always been responsible for trimming their trees in the state right of way.
This is way up, you know, all that stuff there, but the way it was, the way I was always told, if it was, uh... Well, you, you're not gonna get a moving truck to come in there and trim a little bit of a branch and that. But it was up there, but if a dead, uh, a bad branch, or whatever, the city ought to took it down. But now it's the opposite now. They're responsible to take...
It has always been out there, from my understanding, that the homeowner is responsible for the trees in the right of way and responsible to keep them trimmed up, regardless of how high they are or how low they are. You saw, or Bogayor had tree trimming going on with those hackberries, and they're, they're very high. I mean, it is not a height issue. But I'm saying, if Jerry, you're saying those limbs are dangerous, then bring it to the council. See, this is the first time you've mentioned it. Bring it to the council.
Because everything has changed. It used to be you wanna get a tree truck, and you took it down.
Do it. Now we can't.
So now I gotta tell the owners, they gotta get somebody down there. That's what, that's what I want to know.
At first, you need to, yes, yes.
But, okay, that's all I want to know.
If it's dangerous, they'll bring it back, because we want to hear about it.
Well, you got dead branch hanging.
Is it dangerous?
Yeah, I mean, they're all dangerous.
Oh, hanging, there you go, enough.
Yeah, you know, but I'm not.
Yeah.
I make a motion to have Jerry remove the road trees and dispose of them.
Motion by Justin, seconded by Randy, have Jerry remove something? And what was that you did?
Remove the right away trees. The right away trees.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider the update on power supply agreement.
Is there a handoff for that? Yeah?
Everybody received a copy of my notes regarding what I have done since our last meeting at your direction. And based on that direction and discussions I had since then, I've asked Jim Bagley and Jim Gossett with Raccoon Valley to come up and visit with you directly about their proposal. Are there any questions before we get started with that? Anything you don't understand about what's gone on to this point?
We're gonna talk about consulting relationship later, after this, right?
Anything from anybody else? Guys are up.
Thanks. I'm Jim Gossett.
Good luck.
I'm the director of key accounts for Raccoon Valley Electric. And Jim Bagley's here, the CEO's here too. He's gonna help us answer some of the questions that you'll have in a minute. I just want to make kind of the opening remarks on behalf of Raccoon Valley Electric. We've been your power provider for, for many years. Uh, we'd like to continue to be your power provider. When we were first approached with the notification that the contract, the current contract would be ending, uh, we had the pleasure of submitting bids for the power contract. Um, we were not contacted about, were not contacted to be any kind of a finalist bidder or, or enter into contract negotiations until just a couple of weeks ago. You, I hope by now have seen our bids for the power supply and for the operations and maintenance contract. Uh, we're here to find out what you need tonight, what you want. Uh, but we do want to recognize that other bidders have come, other bidders have gone, consultants have come and gone. Uh, and we've been here the whole time. Uh, not only are the lights still on, under contract, of course. Uh, but, uh, you know, we're prepared to work with you on, on a new contract. Time's getting short. Yesterday, we were six months behind. According to the schedule, you provided us the bids. Yesterday, we were six months behind. We have about four months left on calculating in the current contract. It bubbles uphill for us. We've got to get a hold of our power providers and on down the line. So time is of the essence. Uh, we would, after answering your questions, be prepared at the end of that time period tonight to ask you to request staff and council to enter into contract negotiations and get this deal done. What kind of questions you have for us?
Um, my overall question is, you alluded to some changes in the original proposal that they had...
Certainly.
Right, and they do not have the details of that, Jim. I did not print out what you emailed me today, so...
That's fine. No, that's fine.
Because that's what you said.
That's right, that was sent in there. So let me cover a little bit, anything that might have changed on our side from the original proposals. Let's start with the power contract. Uh, we have worked with our power supplier, Cornbelt Power, to obtain for the city of Auburn ten thousand dollars a year in credits to your bill for three years. That's thirty thousand dollars in credits. That's something worth sharing, that credit for Cornbelt Power. Uh, and it's a, it's a credit that quite honestly, uh, is, would have been unattainable but for our lobbying efforts with Cornbelt's board, calling in some favors to them. Uh, because since we went out for bids, you went out for bids.
Jim, do you have anything in mind that you're gonna go through all these points?
Yeah, if you'll instruct, yeah, if you'll instruct staff to, to move forward.
No, we didn't print anything out, because, to tell you the truth, we were kind of at the last minute to come over here. So this is just where we're at. So we didn't provide any bullet points, because we weren't sure what you were asking for tonight.
Right, but you're asking for a decision by the council.
Well, they're into negotiations, but where we're at is...
Exclusively with you, correct?
Well, in Iowa, power contracts have to be exclusively.
It wasn't, I know, but I mean, that, that, I, I guess I just like, as you were going through these very important points, that we had them on paper, so we didn't look at them.
Well, we can write them down for you or something, but, but we did not print this out. This is, we were both out of town last week.
There's not a lot of points.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not like...
Bear with them, okay?
It doesn't get very complicated beyond this.
But we can answer questions then, if you need something, I can work with you there.
Yeah. In order to provide those credits, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna need a twenty-year contract, not a ten-year contract that's proposed. So the terms of twenty-year contract, we would go year to year following that term, just like your proposal language is now. Uh, we also want to, uh, we also want to include in there, and this is not in your proposal, request for proposals, the option for us together, Raccoon Valley and the city, to consider the feasibility of installing distribution lines from the Brea Substation. Now, we can go into detail on that, but essentially what that does is it takes us away from the Mid-American sub, onto our sub. That's gonna save you some costs, uh, and we can explain more about that, uh, as we, as we move forward. Now, on the operations and maintenance side, it's been requested since we went to the second or third...
When you, when you create that new sub, is that, does the city of Auburn get charged for that cost?
You would have a substation, the sub is there, the Brea sub is there. You would have a, a substation cost, like every other member does, the big member. And then you would, uh, we pay for, you would help us pay for the, the construction of the distribution lines from the sub here.
And to redistribute it, found that substation.
We'd have to bring for a line to come to.
But the line has to be built, and that's the Brea sub.
It's, the line has to be built for three, about two and a half miles out of town.
So there's some cost to that.
There's some cost. That, that's the cost. The fee would be, there, there's line losses between the sub to here on the WAP allocation and on the firm power. And we can't absorb the losses. So there has to be a fee to absorb the losses and a fee to kind of recoup our infrastructure cost, because we're nonprofit, but we're not a charity. You know, we have to recoup, but it would be substantially less than the substation cost over here, because you're bearing a hundred percent of that, where it's a shared with the rest of the members on that. So it'd be, it would be a fraction of what you're paying for the substation cost over here. But that's where we'd have to decide then. We'd have to come up with the, because I'd give you a price, what it takes to build it today, but I don't know what it takes next year. It could be cheaper. Um, but that would be something, if we put in the contract, we could talk about then.
But we still could put in that redistribution line, I'll call it.
Yeah, it's, it's a line extension. No.
And we're gonna give you, give you twenty-year line, right?
Yeah, yeah, it would be, it would be built into the rate somehow. We, it would be something like, so instead of paying...
Seventeen hundred.
Instead of paying seventeen hundred, you pay a substantially less amount to cover our line extension.
Would, would you guys supply us the power at our current voltage? Or is this something that we're gonna buy a new main transformer for?
The voltage, it comes to the high side of the transformer, would be the same.
Is what we currently have, because we're weird.
Yeah.
Right now, I mean, okay.
And then if you, but if, you know, later on, if you move, if, if the town migrates to seventy-two hundred volts, we would just kind of tap off a different place. We'd work on a temporary fix to go around it, or whatever at that time. Now, if you wanted to stow that transformer, that's a different conversation. I'm not saying we wouldn't, but that's not included in here. You would still own the transformer.
Right, I just want to know if we're gonna have to go through the cost of another eighteen thousand dollar transformer to hook up to your guys' voltage or not.
No, as far as you're concerned, the high side voltage is looking just the same.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, not at all. And then on the operations and maintenance contract, you know, we bid that initially as standalone and without the power. So we really just incorporate that, not into the power contract. It would still be separate. But, uh, in real terms, if, we would waive the proposed five hundred dollar a month fee for the operations and maintenance contract and charge you what we charge our wholesale customers. Now Nancy, that's not the same scale as your first bid, cost plus. It's, uh, it's the, it's what we're charging everybody else. So think of it in terms of, you know, we, we were talking about a hundred and ten percent of our cost. It's more like a hundred and thirty.
Okay.
But I think if you look back, and we didn't do this yet, we will, we didn't have time. But if you look back, I think if you take away the five hundred and add it, add it a percent, I think you're, I think you're safe with money.
You are.
Safer, safer capacities.
And that's the same price we charge for Liddon, Wall Lake.
Yeah. And that's just, and that's something to be fair, we have to, we want to be fair with all of our, our wholesale customers, our wholesale members, so... Other than that, we don't propose any other changes, but we're happy to visit with you about what you've got in mind. Uh, we just want to reiterate that time is of the essence. I have said to Nancy, and I believe, especially through this process, a little bit that we know of it, that first of all, we're behind by six months. We've got four months to go. And I've always really just believed that we should work with, with partners that we know and trust. Uh, and I can, and, and we totally believe, or we completely believe and understand your, your concerns over, uh, over your citizens and your customers, their costs, your costs. Uh, but what you've got in Raccoon Valley is a partner that you know and trust, reliable service. And I would offer operations and maintenance service over and above the contract and over and above what's expected. And we've done that because of our relationship with the city and most, especially the staff with Nancy. Um, and, and so it's been, it's been a pleasure to serve you to this point. Uh, we'd like to keep serving you, but we need to know what that, what that is and what kind of timeline we might be talking about, because we're, we're pushing up against it.
We're not comfortable, we shouldn't ask for another, a little bit more to, don't give you an answer tonight like you want right tonight, regardless. For us to talk about a little more?
Twenty-year contract, Gary.
And that's just starting to...
A long time.
Tonight's decision is too soon, right?
A lot of stuff is happening in the power field for a twenty-year contract.
And that's totally your all's prerogative. You know, we're no problem, but...
I mean, we don't want to make it better than not saying tonight, you know, we're just saying.
We need to... If we'd been having this discussion ten months ago, I'd have a lot more flexibility and time. But we have to enter into other contracts with Mid-American, other people do that. We've already terminated our contract with Mid-American.
For that subsidy, yeah.
Yeah, we've already terminated it. So I have, we have to reestablish that. We have to go, our power provider, re-get, re-acquire the allocation of power. So, um, the, the twenty-year, if you want the discounts, it's twenty years. That's the concessions we had to make to get the discount. If you don't want the discount, it's the same as before. And I have no flexibility on that, because that's, I traded a lot to get that, and that's as far as they would go.
Can you talk to council a little bit, Jim, about what you foresee the, the challenges in the power supply arena to be in the next few years, especially some of the regulations and stuff coming down from the federal government?
Yeah. Last winter, PJM's the largest power market in the country. It's Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland, it's what it stands for, but it's the largest market. They came within about six thousand megawatts of going in the dark during the polar vortex. Now, six thousand megawatts around here sounds like all the power in the world, but it's nothing. I mean, it's a neighbor, it's a big neighborhood in New York. Is how close they came to having a, a full-scale rolling blackout, stopping stuff out. There's been generation going offline the last ten years, or since two thousand eight, since the recession. A lot of generations went offline due to the fact, A, there was reduced load. The consumption went way down in the industrial areas of Chicago, Ohio, the larger cities. We didn't really see that here, but they seen it there. Um, with the new EPA regulations, there are a lot of coal plants going offline. The more coal plants that go offline, the higher per unit the price of electricity is. And the less, it becomes a scarce resource.
How much of Cornbelt does, you buy your power from Cornbelt, right?
Yeah.
How much of Cornbelt is dependent on full energy?
Right now, about seventy percent, but that's a little bit misleading. It, it's, seventy percent's the easiest number I can give you. I can give you. But also, we can bite off the market too at Corn Belt right now. The market's drying up, though.
How does that compare to other sources of power, their percentage of coal versus...
I know Mid-America was higher a few years ago. I don't know that they're 70% now. I think they're probably below 70% now. But they've aggressively shut some plants down. They lost some load. But now, Mid-America, from what, now, this is what I hear in meetings, you know, industry meetings. I'm not saying this is 100% fact because I don't look at their financials. They are shedding some load so they can sell power in more profitable areas. As far as like, they don't want to negotiate with certain people because they don't want to sell the power to Google or Facebook because Facebook's bigger than half of western Iowa in power consumption, and you deliver it to one point. There's a lot more profit margin in that. We have almost the same thing.
But it goes back to my question, and I understand that.
Oh, yeah.
I know that. But it goes back to my point that in Raccoon Valley, the power from Corn Belt, 70% of Corn Belt's power is generated from coal, and coal is facing a lot, shall we just say, challenges?
Challenges is a good way to put it.
And I obviously know nothing yet.
No, it's an intelligent question.
But just when you get to the bottom line, what does that...
But you're no different than any other power generation company out there.
None around here. We're no different around here.
I mean, Basin is...
Hartland, we're, there's a thing called the IS, we're in it. Our Basin is our ultimate power provider. It's in agreement with the IS, with Hartland and WAPA to form the IS. The only thing that backs up, the only reason WAPA's able to sell you hydro power is because there's coal power backing the dumpers or reciprocating agreement, because they can't control, they can't control the weather. Right now, the cheapest way to generate gas right now, on the variable part, the variable being the fuel cost, is natural gas. The fixed cost can be higher, but the variable cost can be low. But it doesn't take Milton Freeman or a Nobel-winning prize economist to know the best way to get the $8 gas decotherm again is for everybody to start using gas. So there is no safe bet. I'm just gonna say that. There is no safe bet right now. It is the hardest time, probably in history, for power producers to take that step because there are a lot of unknowns. What we bring is we bring saying, you're gonna have generation for 10 years or for 20 years. That's the value. You're going to have it. It's not like you're, it's not like all of a sudden you're not gonna have generation. You're gonna have generation. The member cost will always be less than, in a normal economy, the member cost will always be less than the non-member cost. You know, there are times in the winter that power was selling for $1,000 a megawatt hour. Now, $1,000 a megawatt hour, you multiply, divide that by 100, that's $10 a kilowatt hour. Now, small entities cannot stand that fluctuation, that short-term, two or three hours will wipe us out, you know, that short-term fluctuation. What we're seeing is, you're not gonna have that. There's a, there's firm power committed to your resources. Now, our power provider would love it if we said we weren't gonna do this, although this is not big. But if we, the more load we give up, the more they like it because they have, they're also supplying power to the Bakken, the biggest oil boom in the history of America at least. I was up there last week. It's unbelievable. You can't go through McDonald's, or, you know, it takes 30 minutes. So there's a natural born, built-in load in the Midwest that is consuming a lot of generation. And that may be your, going forward, I don't know if it's now, 10 years from now, that will be the biggest constraint, is finding somebody to provide the power. Because even us as a REC, we're not profitable compared to a Facebook that takes, you know, twice our load at one plant. That, that's kind of where we're at. It's a scary time. I don't think all the EPA things will come to fruition. On the good side, most of our power comes from North Dakota. North Dakota got an excellent number in the EPA reductions. Each state has a different number. Iowa's number didn't affect us. North Dakota has the greatest effect on us. Since they're growing so much, they won't have to, the impact will be a lot more minimal in North Dakota than it will be in a state that has a lot of coal that's not growing. So, and I forget the bad states, but there are some states that was terrible. I've seen the map, but North Dakota has one of the best numbers. But not to be, to not be afraid of what's gonna happen to coal, though, would be naive. Would be naive not to be afraid of that. But we're not saying, we're not, this contract didn't say we're gonna provide you power generated by coal. It says we're gonna provide you power.
Do you have any idea how many of these coal plants might convert to natural gas?
Well, you know, you can't get firm, you can't get firm natural gas in northwest Iowa right now. Firm gas means on-demand, whenever you want it. That's the case. We converted a plant, Corn Belt converted a plant in Spencer, the Wisdom Plant, from coal to gas, and then couldn't run it through the coldest part of the winter because you couldn't get gas. So, so it's very...
There's somewhere along here about, we got this tremendous abundance of natural gas, then winter rolls around, and all of a sudden we have a damn shortage of this bullshit. Somewhere there bullshit, isn't there?
Somewhere there is. I don't know, but if we, I guarantee if we can't buy, if they can't buy gas, it's hard for anybody to buy gas because they, they book it months ahead of time. It's pipeline, pipeline concerns. Usually flare off more natural gas in the Bakken oil reserve than the United States uses, if I remember right. It's a huge number just to flare gas, but there's no pipeline infrastructure. And I could go into a 28th dissertation if I, that's a problem, I won't bore you with that. I'm gonna cut to the chase here a little bit because I know you all have a lot to do. We're out of time. We either gotta do something quick, or we'll wish you luck. Because I can't negotiate, you know, with the lawyers and stuff. We have to negotiate these contracts and put stuff in place. We do not want you getting into something you do not want to do by any means. So, you know, we're more than happy. If you've got a great option, go with it. But if it's gonna be us, we have to start very quickly because it's not just us. The power's not generated here. The power comes from somewhere else. The power didn't even go through our power lines right now. We have to get it, get it through, generated by somebody.
You are willing to extend the contract for...
Not now.
No more, you're...
No, no more. We're past that. I just don't think I can, I don't know that I can, the lawyer fees we're gonna incur are gonna be more than we make in a year. You know, when a lawyer sees desperation, you know what I mean?
He's gonna see dollar signs?
Yeah, he's gonna see dollar signs.
This is on tape.
So, I'm not saying 100% no, but I'm saying I, I just really hesitate now. A month ago, three weeks ago even, but it, by the time, by the time our board meets again, to consider after, your board meets again, to consider after I get through Corn Belt and everybody else, we're down to the wire.
And that's if it works.
That's if it works. I can't, I'll put this, I can't guarantee an extension now because I don't have time to go through the hoops like I did even two weeks ago. I had another board meeting I could go through.
We spent the last two weeks trying to get you these credits.
Yeah. So now if I go back for an extension, I've already used up a lot of my political power, because nobody else got these. The only people that got these were people that extended, you know, on that one deal, which I never understood the first deal, to tell you the truth. But the larger a group of people you have, sometimes compromise doesn't always get you the best answer you want to hear. But that's where I'm at, and I haven't, that's nothing we control. So we either need to be negotiating, or we need to be helping you move on. And that's kind of where we're at. Now, I apologize for that, but that's just the, that's the, that's the nuts and bolts of the situation. So, we need to know if we're negotiating in the next few weeks to go on.
Do you all want to talk about it and have Nancy give them the yes or no tomorrow?
Did you want to visit with him about any of the rebates or the load control things that I had put in my notes to you? Are you questioning any of that, or is that not...
I don't have any questions at this point with that, but that's...
I mean, I assume that what we discussed two weeks ago is still...
Yeah.
The rough framework of where we can go.
We'll help you with some energy efficiency rebates, a certain amount, a certain amount a year.
Yeah.
We'll negotiate that.
Yeah, negotiate that.
You didn't mention any of that, so I wanted to make sure. I had shared our, I had shared notes from our discussion before with them, and I wanted to...
Well, we're trying to keep this... There's no question. We're trying to keep the main thing the main thing right now.
Well, and it needs...
All of us are, but it's a very good point. And everything that we've talked about on the edges, we still want.
But because in that power update, in that same memo, she, Nancy mentions that there is an extension.
I, well, yes, but that's, that was because you and I had that conversation with Jim over a month ago. So if they've changed that, that's, that's new.
So all, everything in your data isn't necessarily...
This is what I had on Thursday when I wrote this.
Yes, that was...
All right?
The first thing anybody's heard about an extension is right now, well, nobody's said anything about an extension since we talked. I never got a formal...
And, yeah, we didn't discuss that.
Now, I'm not saying, we could sit down and negotiate an extension, but it's not gonna be, I can't have our members lose money to provide you an extension, so it's not gonna be on these terms. The extension would be a standalone extension with our legal fees covered and things like that. That's the only way we can do it. And, you know, because the higher, the bigger the organization a lawyer works for too, the lawyers for Corn Belt and Mid-America are not cheap. I mean...
Yeah, they give $500 an hour.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. You know, so we have to make sure Mid-America will do it for another year or two, which I think they would. I really think they would. But I think a lot of things that sometimes are wrong about.
And we understand the predicament that the situation has put you in. You know, it's, it's, it's everybody's and nobody's responsibility here. It's your responsibility to provide the power to your, to your citizens. But to, but to us and our members, an extension could very well mean an extension for a year and you still go somewhere else. And this is still an exercise for us in futility. I think that we've got an opportunity.
But we've had such a long relationship with you over the past...
We'll take that into consideration.
Oh, absolutely.
That will buy, that will buy, that will buy, I just can't give you a carte blanche.
Sure.
We're gonna extend now because I might have to do some arm twisting, which I can do. But, but I'm gonna go back after I get some arm twisting for a long-term contract to do an arm twist for a short-term contract. It makes me look like we don't know what we're doing, and they sense blood in the water, and...
Yeah.
Bingo was his name, so we're...
And we appreciate you.
Oh, we don't know what we're doing, that's all.
No, but I will say this, there's a lot of people in your, there's a lot of people in your situation right now. It's a confusing time with this.
Right.
The best deal we can offer today is a 20-year contract because it's about $10,000 a year, the first three years in discounts.
That's a big contract that you're gonna do without, really.
Well, that's true. But what we're asked for is to start negotiation. If we're negotiating in good faith, that buys us some time.
We're not asking you to sign it, so...
No, we just...
But we're saying, we'd like to talk about it as a group.
Oh, I don't blame you.
Before you get any indication about whether or not it's okay to proceed.
That's why I say in the next week or so, we need to know, know which way we're proceeding. That's what, that's where we're going. I don't expect you to jump on something you're not ready for, because we don't want you getting into something you don't want. Bad, we do not make enough money here for bad publicity, quite honestly. The easiest thing for us to have done is said, our bid was rejected, we're out. And I got a lot of counsel telling me, councils being other individuals, you know, that we work with saying, get out. Because desperation never leads to good agreement.
Sure.
On either side, and we don't want you to get in a bad agreement. So, I don't know if that, I hope that answers all the questions, but...
Anything else, guys?
So, in order to get the discounts, we have to do a 20-year contract.
Yes.
So, but you're willing to do like a 10-year contract without...
With no discounts.
Discounts.
Yes.
Oh, struck.
I mean, I will be quite honest, we'd do a five-year contract without discounts. I don't care at that point. We would go to a five-year if that makes you feel better. I don't think you'll get as good a deal in five years. I'm pretty sure of that, but...
And in three years, we'll be right back here.
Yep.
No, we're gonna have to start next year because we've been at this two and a half years now.
Yeah, I was in here with the IEMU lady two or three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
To let this process start. The world can be better, it can be worse, but it hasn't gotten any better since it started, that's for sure.
One of the, one of the conversations Jane and I had on, on some time is, is my concern that if we don't lock in a power supply at this point for 10 or even 20 years, which would be my recommendation, at the end of this contract, we're going to, the decision is not going to be who can we buy power from. It's who do we have to franchise or sell our system to?
I really believe that. Or if you, or you're gonna have one option. If you only have one option, that's never a good option, if that's, if you go into it like that. And who knows, though? The economy could take tomorrow. You could hit the best time in history. The projections with power plants shutting down and load growing...
The regulations.
The regulations growing. It's not, there's a reason Mid-America didn't bid. Now, maybe they reconsider, I don't know, but there's a reason people like that don't bid. There's a value to firm generation right now. And every time you hear of a power plant shutting down, that value grows. I could see a time in the future where it'll be a tough decision whether we sell all of our firm generation and pay our members and say, good luck.
Yep, absolutely.
But the value may be there, you know? I don't know.
Or if we can't, on our, on our small scale, find anybody that'll sell it to us.
You're not a good...
They're always pumping out the power.
No, they're not.
Yes, they will. They'll never live without power, and I don't believe that.
Because let's...
They're out there, they're powered regardless.
You're, you're probably right, but I don't know how many bids you got.
You'd pay more for what cost?
Well, yeah, for a cost. Yeah, you're right, for a cost.
You're never gonna be without it. Just might pay more.
I'll say right now that's the case. I do not know 10 years from now. I do not know this 10, 10 years from now. I don't know.
It's like a 20-year contract. We don't know until we return.
When I came up from Missouri, in Missouri, they were going out, the, the power providers went to the REC's and saying, you do no economic, economic improvements at all. You do not recruit any businesses because we, we can subsidize your power sales by selling this on the open market more than you can make. So that, who knows? I don't think you'll, I don't think you'll ever see the line cut and nobody's serving you. I think you're right there.
Well, we'll have 30% of it or 27% from WAPA for another 50 years, but that's, that's blackouts.
Well, WAPA's firm power.
Yeah, but we only get 30% of our power from them. It isn't, we can decide if we want it...
And if probably 30% is a declining block too, that's...
Yeah, we can decide if we want it, you know, January through March, but...
Well, we'll leave you alone, but that's kind of where we're at. Just let us know how we can help. Good luck.
Thank you for your time, guys. Appreciate it very much.
We were on short notice, or we tried to head something more prepared, but, so, thank you, Nancy.
That's with a couple of chicken scratches, but that's enough different in this part from what I sent to you.
Can you get us the bullet points?
I just handed them to Nancy.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, she can type, she can, she can copy it for you, that good enough?
So what's firm and what isn't so firm, and that sort of thing?
Let me, let me, let me verify this real quick, because, just so I... Yes, that's firm.
Okay, great. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Are we gonna act on the power supply?
I was gonna be talking about a little bit.
Yeah.
A 20-year contract, I'm scared of it. That's a long time to lock into something in the volatile market. You know, there's so many advancements in technology and stuff now.
So, we're locking in 20 years. We only get a three-year...
A three-year $10,000.
A $30,000 discount. And they're not locking in, they're not guaranteeing any rates. I mean, the rates are still gonna up.
They will, at a 20-year, yeah.
Right, at a 20-years.
Yeah.
The rates will start bumping.
We'll probably have a cap, probably pretty similar to what we have now. I can't remember what it is. Where is our current cap on our, what can increase on our contract?
Oh, I think it's 130%.
Our, our cost can increase 130%?
From the, from the very base at the very beginning, whatever's said at the beginning.
Well, life of the contract, it can increase 130%.
I think that's what it is. And then, at any time it does that, or it's 1.3% or, I don't know, Justin, I'm sorry. I can't, I can't answer that in an intelligent way right now. But, you know, then at that point, you're free to look around when, any point that those costs go up by that much. You're free to look around. You don't necessarily have to cancel the contract at that point. But you do, you will, I mean, in anything that we would agree to, have some kind of cost control or at least opt-out provisions.
There's one thing that we can guarantee, it's not going down.
No.
Oh, my God, I know that.
I can tell you that in their proposal, in their original proposal, I don't know if I put this in my notes to you or not, the next projected rate increase is 2017. And that would be 4.5%. And then, 0 in 18, 3.4% in 19.
Wait, Eric, because it wasn't 27. So 4.5% is the...
4.4% in 17, 0 in 18, 3.4% in 19. Now, this is their projection. I don't know that it, you know, it's not something you're gonna get involved into. They anticipate a 2.98% in 2020, nothing in 21, 3.5% in 22, 1.8% in 23, and they've got 0 in 24.
And that's, you're reading off the proposal.
This is the proposal that they had originally submitted.
Right.
This is the proposal that they had originally submitted. Monthly, monthly substation charge at $17, base demand at 1739 per kilowatt, transmission to demand at 257, and energy at .038815.
This is just what they're proposing, that doesn't mean that that's a contribution.
Right. Well, and that was in that original proposal. Now, if they start putting credits in, that all changes. You know, it, you know...
But it doesn't sound like we're gonna, the only credits we're gonna get is in the first three years.
That $10,000 I guarantee, that's approximately, except for here, that ain't true.
Yeah, it would be close to that based on, probably, I don't know how they're basing that, but I'm guessing it's based on actual...
With their projection in the next three years, say, when we have our credits, our $30,000 of the credits.
Okay.
Their projection of a 4.5% increase is gonna cost us an extra $6,649 in the first three years. So, almost one year's worth of credits are gonna get wiped out with their rate increase within the first three years.
Well, but you're gonna get all those wherever you go.
I know, I'm just saying, that doesn't mean a whole lot to me.
Okay, but the Heartland contract put in a 5% increase on transmission and a 2.5% increase on demand every year.
Nancy, could we do this? I told you I had some additional information and it'll definitely change the conversation and may change the process, hopefully, and I'm excited about it. It's positive information. And I have not distributed this to anyone, so I will give you, it is a letter from the CEO of Mid-America that said they're interested in a proposal to Auburn for power supply. And of course, he adds in, doing some sort of analysis on if we ever did want to sell the system, blah, blah, blah. But he understands that we're in the power supply purchasing mode, we're not in the selling the system mode, okay? He is, I told him that we're under tremendous pressure to, time constraint pressure, to get this done. He is still interested. And he said, Lakeview is one of the few communities, this is interesting, in the state of Iowa that still has a power supply contract with Mid-America. It is set to expire in 2015, sometime in 2015. He said, it's, there's the possibility that they could extend Lakeview's power supply contract and bring us in as a part of that power supply contract. We would have our own standalone contract, but I'm sure with all the layers of regulation, what he was talking about was somehow working it out so they could provide power to both Auburn and Lakeview. And he's anxious to submit a proposal and he understands the time constraints. He can get a proposal to us by the first week in September. Right. But here's an opportunity, and here, I'll give you the letter. It is from the CEO himself. I was so impressed, and, you know, we've already heard discussions about... That's all right, I'll keep that.
On short runs.
Thank you. We've already heard discussions about how we may not be able to buy power because Mid-America does sell power to some big, big places. He was very interested and...
As the answer said, Lakeview doesn't come on board. I mean, they don't...
Yeah, because if theirs is up for reconsideration, there's no guarantee they're going back.
To Mid-America?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, no, I think he's gonna, he's gonna make a proposal and then that will be based, I'm sure...
As long as it's not contingent on Lakeview's, I mean, you know...
Did you ask him why they didn't propose a year ago?
He said that they got a letter of interest and they responded with questions to the letter of interest and then didn't hear anything back on the...
Really?
Interest. Plus, he also said...
Did you ask John that when you talked to him Friday?
I did, I did ask him. And he thought that he had indications that that, that they weren't viable, somehow maybe it just got lost in the dust. I don't know, I don't want to go there because then it gets into the sandlot again, all of that fancy, but yes, they did respond with questions to the letter of interest, or expression of interest, they call it, in an electrical business. Anyway, I'm really excited about this opportunity. If we can get an extension from REC for, or Raccoon Valley, I guess it is, or if we can't, he's prepared to have the proposals done and evaluated by the first week in September. So, obviously, he's stretching to make this happen. I was very impressed. I hope you guys all are too. And he says, he just wants, he just wants to, well, you can write this letter. He wants you to indicate, to invite them to propose. So, it offers us definitely another option. He suggested that you put together a subcommittee of the council to work with them and with Nancy to facilitate the information gathering process. And I guess I'll leave it for that. So, he's looking for some sort of indication from us that we would like them to submit...
If, okay, if we go for this, if we go, which I think would be a probably a good idea to try, see what they have to say, but I worry about what's gonna come up. They said they would provide power if REC backed down. No. Maybe if, when the contract runs out, as it runs out.
If REC doesn't provide the one-year extension, right?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, if REC doesn't do the one-year extension, they'll have their...
He'll do it.
They'll have their power, they'll have their power proposal in and evaluated in time to terminate REC's proposal, or extension. We will need REC's extension. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
This is what he said about the O and M, the operating and maintenance. He said, "We, we requested a meeting and I said, 'Yes, I know,' and we just haven't had a chance to line that up." He said, "I think we can be very competitive on the maintenance of your lines." He says, "I've got a station," he called it a station in Carroll of guys, "that could easily handle Auburn." And he, and he literally had a bunch of guys in the conference room and they've got the maps, you can hear the papers shuffling, and he says, "We've got a substation there, right?" And I said, "Yes." And he says, "Well, I think it's, it's time we can work something out." He said, "Now, I can't promise anything, but I can just tell you that the conversation was very, very positive." And he, he's not against Raccoon Valley or, you know, or nothing like that. He's just saying, "We'll make the deadline. Give us an opportunity, but we want to know that, that the city is saying, 'Yes, we'd like to see the proposals.'"
It would be a fool not to look at it.
Okay, so, Raccoon Valley's talking, they need to know in a week, and neither of them want to converge to, what is that, two, three weeks?
Yeah.
Do we meet in the middle of two weeks with both sides? I mean, is that...
Raccoon Valley might back out later here, we're looking at this one too.
He's saying, he's saying that if Raccoon Valley won't do an extension, that you will know whether his proposal is right or wrong by, for time to notify Raccoon Valley. They have like, I think they have 60 days prior to, ours ends, what, January 11th or something with Raccoon Valley?
10.
Jan, January 10. They have to be notified 60 days prior to that.
Then they're...
Yeah, yeah. So, I think...
Which is November 10th.
But, as opposed to entering in immediately to negotiate...
Here's, here's just one other piece of information, and you guys are gonna do it, you're gonna do it, and I'm not gonna say a word, okay? We are at the wire and the last time we took bids and Mid-America did participate, they were the highest bidder of all.
That's what I was just gonna say.
You need to remember that. That's why we went away from them, because they were, of three bids, they were the highest.
I'm upset with John for not following through if they did submit questions back. Why everyone has to really pay in these $6 dollars for a consultant that is ignoring...
Right. I, I have information on John too, but, so, there's that.
So, if we enter contract negotiations with Raccoon Valley, he's getting shaky.
Oh, yeah, you're better.
Oh.
Don't you call him, Derek? Derek?
Take, Larry, take your phone.
All right, that's all right, she can...
I don't know, oh, yeah, I told you. I'm sure...
I lost her on the phone.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. How to bring it on. Oh, yes, because if we enter contract negotiations with Raccoon Valley, does that mean that we cannot...
Do this on the side? No, absolutely not.
Oh, we can't do it on the side, right?
No, because we're in contract negotiations.
No, we can. Yes, we can. We can negotiate with everybody in the world at this point.
We've negotiated.
Not if you're locked into one, you can't.
But he, he wants to know one way or the other.
Well, I...
The council...
I think we're fine entering contract negotiations without signing any exclusive...
He's talking about adding lawyers to it and all of that. Once, once they start to incur costs for lawyers in negotiation, no.
And we might have to end up paying for it if we back out. No, I thought we could negotiate with them, but we didn't have to come right out and say...
We're going.
We're going.
Right, absolutely. That's what we can do.
So, we can call them tomorrow and say, "We're willing to negotiate..."
Give us your best deal, give us the 10-year, give us the 20-year.
But if we go past time, when he's wanting, he's saying, "We want the water."
Right, if we go past their, right, but...
So, what you're really saying is...
Can we get a proposal from these guys, we're starting, we get a firm on-paper proposal from Raccoon Valley, get a firm on-paper proposal from Mid-America. Leave it down to those two and they have...
I think we need to have it in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, so we have...
So, we can have another meeting before September meeting.
I agree. So, we can have a special meeting, once we have it, we can take two or three days to review it, come up with questions that we have, come to the table and figure it out. Do you think they could have one in a couple of weeks? He was saying September 1st, but can we get it in two and a half? You know what I mean?
I can see, I can see. But I think you can negotiate on proposals, but when you start into contract negotiations, that affirms your...
We're still in proposal stage.
Okay. And that's what he's asking for there, is proposal stage?
Yes. We're, we're too far away to be in a contract.
They want within a week or so whether we're gonna do it in a 20-year contract, that's what he said.
Well, if we do all this work and then at our, our September council meeting, you guys can make a final decision, but you gotta come to the meeting prepared to do that.
But they're not willing to give us that time, the way they signed it tonight, they want to know what's...
Well, if we're working on it, they'll give us that time.
If we're negotiating...
If we're ignoring them in the middle, they're gonna, they're gonna go away.
So, they're gonna refine their proposal, let's say.
Yeah, because there's a lot of things we discussed that aren't...
Right, we need to see them.
On it.
Yeah, I want to see what they're doing for rebates, I want to see what they're doing for all that before I'll even consider it either way.
You mean Mid-America?
Both, Raccoon Valley and...
Yeah.
I want both to tell me, we can have, Mid-America say we have a full rebate program. Being a customer, Raccoon Valley says, "You have our rebate up program up to $5,000 with city's 50% match or whatever," you know what I mean? I just want to know what both players are willing to take. But I definitely want to hear from Mid-America if they are...
They're looking for the best...
If they're not interested and they're, they're willing to...
It really was impressive.
To get on a time constraint, to get us numbers, that, that to me tells me that they want our business, so, hell, give them a shot.
Yeah, I think so too.
No, no matter whose fault it was when it came down to initial, I mean, now we...
Obviously, we know whose fault it was, our consultant.
And we need to...
Let's just get one...
Yeah, get both.
Yeah.
I mean, what's it gonna hurt?
And then if maybe I could move on...
Put pressure on both to get us numbers.
Okay.
They don't have to like what we're doing, because we have a choice.
But I think it would be good if you would work with Nancy, since Nancy knows...
Oh, absolutely, we're not cutting Nancy out.
No.
But, but...
But I'm gonna make one request, if we're gonna involve Nancy in this.
Okay, we don't have to, but I thought that would be good.
No, my request is that you and I make the phone calls together, you don't go outside of the process and start calling people.
What about if Justin, since he knows the electricity, what if he worked with you? He's good at it.
I can't get in here once it's here, that's my problem, I...
Yeah, because I...
I can't get here...
I have a hard time understanding it, so I have to really reread it several times.
I can't get here eight to nine, you know what I mean?
Nancy, I'm gonna let that comment about outside the process, because obviously, you worked with Raccoon Valley outside the process.
At council direction.
Well, now wait, and that, then that's where we get into this consultant. And I said that none of this would reflect negatively on you, and I want to state that.
And I, I don't feel like it is, however, when I get calls on Friday afternoon from people who are upset because you've shared things that were council things...
Because you've said things that are true.
I did not.
Yes, you did.
Not one thing. And I sure as hell don't write things down that are lies.
Well, let's just say your perspective was a bit skewed.
It just grew on at that part.
So, the point is, is he, Bill Burnham wants to hear from the city of Auburn if they're interested in these proposals. So, I would, I would like to make a motion, and if that's appropriate and if you want to consider it, I think it's an opportunity. Maybe it won't be anything, maybe it won't materialize into any value, but I have a feeling that they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't respond like this if they weren't really interested in doing this, Mr. Wilson.
Well, I guess the only thing I ask is that you work with Nancy through the process, make sure the calls are made from the city office, and we can all move forward and get our proposals and kind of figure it out. And let's go ahead and schedule, you want to wait to schedule a special meeting or do we want to just go ahead?
I think we need to wait till we get numbers, so we know what, when, I mean, for two days ahead, you know what I mean?
No, the numbers should come in four days.
Get the numbers, I mean, is there, is there any days that currently don't work for it, but, I mean, I know it's hard to know what's happening.
Yeah, I'll be gone the last week in August, and I hate that. It's not that possible, I could come back, it's just a two-hour drive.
Is it something that we can maybe do over the phone? I mean, if we...
Include you in it.
Telephone, would that suffice? Okay.
And if I have to come back, I have to come back.
Well, nobody's making...
Yeah, it's not that last, I'm not picking a nail, but...
It's best if we keep them on a Monday.
Yeah.
I'm good in there.
I can fit it in about any time, long as I know a little head time.
This is important, so...
It is important, I very...
I think we gotta get, yeah, we gotta do the best for her.
Okay, so, could, I'll, I'll make a motion, do I, Nancy, that Nancy write a letter and fax a letter to Bill Burnham, thanking him for his letter, and indicating that, yes, the city of Auburn is interested in him engaging immediately in developing these proposals. I mean, something's...
Possible by the...
And can I, yeah, communicate a timeframe of...
Communicated by...
Tomorrow.
Uh-huh.
I'll meet it by...
What?
Right.
How about two weeks from today is September 20?
If we can't have it by this date, how soon is the absolute soon? Because, uh, in talking to him, he thought the September 5th date that he was talking about would-
Yeah, that's the end of the first week of September. That's a Friday.
Okay.
So that is a-
Thought that would work, give all the-
That is a full-
All the regulatory-
That's a Friday before our council.
Yeah.
That is a full, we're three days short of a month away, guys, to go that far.
Yeah, but we're not gonna turn down an opportunity with Mid-America to, well, we're-
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm saying-
So what I'm saying-
Friday, the 5th of September is a month away.
Okay. Let's get the letter to him. I make a motion, that Nancy prepare a letter with your signature, Verdi, inviting, uh, Mid-America to prepare to, develop two proposals. Uh, and we will facilitate the process to ensure it goes as rapidly as possible. And you can even put in there, we'll, we'll be contacting you in the near future to discuss deadlines for the proposal. Is that fair? That's my motion.
Second all that.
I'm not gonna repeat this.
Yeah, fair.
Motion by Jane, second by Justin. Any further discussion on the motion? All the votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So what do I say to REC? Who won?
Uh, come up with numbers. Come up, continue, come up with, uh, hard numbers, 10-year, 20-year contract.
Yeah, a 10-year and a 20-year.
I'm just not sold on that 20-year, if they're looking.
No.
Very, very nice.
We're not saying no, we're not saying yes, no.
Yeah.
Is that good enough?
They're outside waiting.
Are they really?
We said we wasn't gonna give it to them, Randy, so it's fine.
Yeah, we aren't going out to tell them that anyway. Will you put that in the form of a motion, please?
I make a motion to, uh, tell Raccoon Valley to get us hard numbers.
Later. Motion by Justin, second by Randy. RV gets a harder number in our contract. All the votes, any further discussion? All the votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are we done with the power supply agreement yet?
Power supply, uh, consultant services.
The what?
Consultant services.
Right here. John.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Well, done with the power supply.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
No, no, consider power supply, I don't care.
Consider the consultant services, it's under that.
No, but it'll be short.
It's a separate, a separate item.
Yeah.
No, it's a power supply.
But it's a sub, it's a subheading under the power supply.
Just say it.
Now we're gonna discuss the consultant.
Say consultant services, here we go. That's like two years ago. Okay, let's get back to the consultant services now. When we have a-
I have a letter, did you? We have a letter of termination. From the consultant. I must not have had them much longer.
It's on the back of this one. I'll find one next year.
Okay. Okay, there. See you later.
Right there, but-
Oh, there, I said, I, I saw it on the computer. I guess I didn't see it.
Be back in a little bit.
Thanks.
This is the other one, right? From the consultant. I must not have had them much longer.
It's on the back of this one. I'll find one next year.
Okay. Okay, there. See you later.
Right there, but-
Oh, there, I said, I, I saw it on the computer. I guess I didn't see it.
Be back in a little bit.
Thanks.
This is the other one, right?
What happened?
Two months.
No.
There you go.
Right there, right there.
It's on the back.
This is your game, man.
They got that big dog.
I printed everything off, but I did.
You're up, Verdi. Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the consultant service? What's the deal?
Okay, here's, here, let me give you my perspective, and, and it is just that. But, um, when I got Nancy's memo on, uh, the power update, there were so many things in there that I, I was questioning. Now, at the last minute, at the last meeting, we decided, and we gave her direction, uh, that, uh, this legal status issue was such an important issue that we did not want to consider Hartland's proposal.
No.
Even though it was the cheaper. I mean, that's basically what, what we decided.
No.
Hartland, Hartland had a proposal. Anyway, let me finish, and then you can, you can start in on me. All right. Uh, so I didn't understand all of that, because Nancy indicated in her memo that the information that our consultant, who we paid, uh, had sent erroneous information, not good information, about a discussion with, with our city attorney. And then she, she both, and she also indicated to me, and indicates in the power supply update, that she felt strongly that he had a conflict of interest, that some, that he had some sort of conflict of interest with Hartland, who was the cheapest proposer. Um, and, that was verified by Ann Kimber, who's with the Iowa Association of Utilities. So, bottom line is the impression I got that this consultant, there was something not right. Okay? And we have paid him for, for his services, and we, I think we have one more clause. So, I called him up, because I was on a search to see why Mid-America did not, did not respond to our proposal. So I called him up, and I asked him, number one, about, and Nancy had been kind enough to send me a memo that indicated that he had listed two people from Mid-America that, uh, had been contacted, or one, and then that person contacted another person. So I called them up, and we walked through that, and, uh, he is the one that said to me that, uh, they did respond, or, and said to me that yes, they had some questions to the expression of interest, but that, uh, you know, I don't wanna say he said, she said, so, and I, and anyway, it was dropped. For whatever reasons, it was dropped from there. There was no response to Mid-America's, uh, questions, and they weren't part of the proposal. Okay. Then, so I was trying to explain to him, I wanted his perspective on the Raccoon Valley, uh, proposal, the 20-year, that's in the two-page memo. And, uh, we went through a, a number of things, and, of course, I don't know enough about it, so I said, "Well, I'll just fax you the memo." Which I did. And I felt no problem with that. If, if he's deficient as a consultant, then he needs to know we know. And that's, that's the way it is. That's how you operate professionally. At any rate, uh, he took the issue, as he said in his termination letter, because he's all done with his, but he, uh, he was under the impression that his relationship with, with us was already terminated. And that, uh, the issue with Hartland, the legal status issue with Hartland, about trying, if we got involved in court in South Dakota, if we were in South Dakota and not in Iowa law, he gave me an entirely different perspective on this. And I'm not, Nancy, it's not you're wrong and he's right, and it's not about the Dennison attorney being wrong and he's right. But I think it's important, what I try to bring to the table every meeting is more information for us. And this is what he wanted to tell you all. That number one, Dennison, the City of Dennison buys power through Missouri River Energy Services. They have agreements that is governed, they call it MRES, M-R-E-S, is governed by South Dakota law. So the City of Dennison, now that's not to say our attorney is the city attorney of Dennison, but that, that MRES, where they get their power, where Dennison buys power, is governed by South Dakota law, in their agreement. He also suggests, or, he stated that. He said, he has numerous communities throughout the state that he's worked with and for. Unblemished record consultant or lawyer? Yes, the consultant. Stanhope, Waverly, Brita, Indianola. Waverly, Indianola, and Brita are under MEAN, which is Nebraska law. But, you know, it's, and may, and there could very well be a big difference between South Dakota and Nebraska law. But the bottom line is, he said, and Stanhope is under South Dakota law. And those are the ones that he could rattle off his head. He said, uh, he has never found that to be a deal breaker. And, and he said, he, he, I really tried to keep it focused, not on whose fault is it, or who didn't say this, or who said this. I just tried to keep it, I want the council to know all of that information. And he may, may have not ever told you that, Nancy, I don't know. Anyway, he is, uh, I told him that Mid-America was willing to put together a proposal, and, in one of my conversations with him. And, he obviously knows how, the perspective that Nancy has with him, and he was, uh, concerned that by our direction, Nancy went and started negotiating with Raccoon Valley. I know this all gets so confusing. But by our direction, I give you that, Nancy, absolutely. Uh, he said, "That's, that's not the way to do it." You know, you, you, the electrical field, as we all know, is very, very complex. He said, "You, it's, it's not just because it's my business." He said, "You have to have a consultant who knows the business, evaluating each proposal that you seem to have." And he said that expertise, uh, is absolutely required. Uh, he said, he said that he was willing to review the proposal from Mid-America if we wanted to either, would not continue, but write a new agreement with them. He would look at that, he'd look at Raccoon Valley's, again, in their, their 10-year and their 20-year, and he would make the comparison. But he said, and he said, and I'd love to present to the council. He said, "I would strongly suggest that you secure a, I'll call it a, a, an attorney with, uh, a lot of expertise." He said, "You don't have to," he said, "I can send you three attorneys that I think are particularly good." Uh, but, he said, "You, you can pick your own attorney, but you really should have an attorney looking at these contracts that have electrical expertise." He said, "A city attorney," and of course, you know, there's that little bit of rub, the city attorney said this, but he said, "I'm telling you, as a city council, you should have a attorney that is highly skilled in electrical matters." And that's more my warning than his. He had, he was much more educated than I was. And so I said, uh, and his one condition, if you do decide to bring him back on to evaluate all three of these proposals, is that we again put together some sort of, he wants to report directly to the city council. And you can imagine, there's a little rub there, but it'll, it'll work, and, if, if you consider it. And, uh, and if you need someone for day-to-day, I will be glad to do it. Nancy tells me I need to get a job, I have too much time on my hands. Um, but, but, I, I felt good after talking to him. Obviously, yeah, he's had some screw-ups, because he couldn't explain away the Mid, Mid-America thing. Uh, but, I do think it's important. This is a huge issue for Auburn. I, I think no matter how much time it takes, and-
They complain about citizens' electricity, so we have to-
We have to do it justice.
And so, uh, he, he would be willing to enter into a new, uh, contract with us, and he said he will move mountains to get the proposals. Uh, all three of the proposals, or whatever proposals are put before him, evaluated, analyzed, evaluated, and report out to the council as quickly as possible, as quickly as we need them. And he himself said that, yes, uh, you know, the first week in September is absolutely essential. I also, just, just for your information, I asked this Bill Burnham, the head of, of Mid-Am, asked him about this John Kritowski, am I saying that? Anyway. And he said he's very, he's, he has a, he felt his, his credentials were impeccable. Now, whether or not that translates, obviously, in some cases, it doesn't translate into absolute perfect execution, but it's, it is. Uh, I, he's, he's got a good name out there. And I think even Ann Kimber would say that. So, uh, that's, that's what I've been doing the last three or four days, and, uh, that would be my, my information that I wanted to share with you. So I know it's a lot, but it's, I, I, I do feel strongly that I think we need a consultant, not that Nancy isn't smart enough, she's certainly smart enough. That's not it. But I think we need a very objective analysis of whatever proposals we, we are going to eventually go on. And we need that analysis done with someone that has that kind of background. And if we work on communication, I think it's still a lot.
Let's go to the rubber fight in here.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No?
Whoa, no motions. Not yet. Did you happen to ask him about the tone of the last letter he sent to council for the last meeting? Remember, he's the one who says, "Your attorney doesn't know anything, so listen to me."
I didn't bring it up, because it's like, uh, when I bring stuff like that up to you, it's like, what's the use?
Well, I mean, seriously, though, he wants to continue to do this. He's admittedly screwed up, and he, in that letter, admittedly, we all sat and read the same thing, and said, "This guy has a conflict of interest that we can't identify." And you want to go back to have the same guy? If we're done with Hartland, let's go back to Bill Liang and have him work on this Mid-American Raccoon Valley thing.
I think it's interesting. Nancy, I, I really think that he's, he's gotten us through the process this far, and if one letter, or one tone, one mismanagement of a tone-
Whoa, no. Seriously.
And if I judge you on every time your tone changed, or if you wrote something that I found abrasive, if I judged you, or your intelligence on that-
I get that, but this guy's charging you $150 an hour.
Uh, $125.
Okay. $125, whatever it is. You pay me a lot less than that, and I'm not an expert.
There is nothing more important in this city than getting this right.
But, except, this guy, as working for the City of Auburn, should be advocating the council's position. The council took the position to not sign this contract under South Dakota law. He should advocate that position, not argue with you against it.
He didn't argue with it.
Yes, he did, you said right here. None of my other cities have had any concern with it, not Brita, Dennis, and I, city attorney did Dennison's-
But see, no, you're taking that out of context. I asked him, I said, "Have you worked with other cities that have this in place?" And he listened to it for me.
Yes, and you went on to say, "And they're all under different, sit, under different state law."
Yes.
And that is not exactly true.
Yes, it is.
Unless you can't believe our city attorney, and I'm telling you guys, this guy knows what he's doing. He's the one who did Dennison's contract with Missouri River. Okay?
Well, that's governed by both Minnesota and South Dakota law.
According to John, according to our city attorney, it is not.
Well-
So, you know, seriously, you guys have gotta pick who you- So, you know, seriously, you guys have got to pick who you're going to listen to. And I don't, you know, I don't care. And I, I will work with this guy if that's what you guys want to do. But when you've got a guy that's questionable, and I don't know, if you're going to walk away from the Heartland thing, then let's go back and get Bill Liang. He only stepped away because he works with Heartland.
Here's what I was going to say before you started in on the tone issue. He, John said that if the legal status, we've made the legal status a deal breaker. But he said, the Heartland contract, the Heartland proposal is still the chief of supply policy. But in this whole Mid-America, he was, he was excited with the prospects of Mid-America jumping in. And he, and...
I, I know, but, but I just have such hard feelings with that. I mean, if he was so excited, we should have gone to our attention.
Probably because I was excited. For whatever reason, he, he didn't say he screwed up. And I just don't want to scratch that scab. So it's, it's a lot, he said, he said. So, I'm just telling you that in order to move ahead in this process, we need a consultant. And we need someone with the expertise and, uh...
Then why don't I go back with Bill Liang? Bill Liang has been our consultant for how many years?
He only stepped away because Heartland was going to bid.
Because this gentleman has the background, has looked at all the proposals that were out there. I, I really think the continuum part makes sense. And he needs, and he, or someone like he, needs to be part of the process moving forward. I feel very strongly about that. I think that was the prudent thing to do. And, uh...
I'm not disagreeing that we don't need a consultant. I mean, because none of us have expertise in any of it.
No.
I am not denying that at all. I'm just not sure we need to be moving forward with him.
Well, he's one of the few that could pick it up and get it done by the end of the first week in September or whenever.
This guy's already seen what we're already done, right? I mean, he's been there.
Yeah, so far.
So if we go back to somebody else, we start over in the beginning, or?
Not necessarily, because the only reason our first consultant backed out was because of this conflict of interest with Heartland.
But if you know the proposals, yeah.
No, no.
So we don't start over again, basically?
No, we just forward them to him.
We just forward everything to him. I, I, I feel like we can get past the communication issues, Nancy. And let's, let's, you know that it makes a whole lot more sense to move forward with someone who's been part of the process for the past year.
Well, in, in normal circumstances, I would agree with that, but I, not with this guy. I, he's told me too many things I've found to be not exactly correct. And then when you throw on it that he didn't follow up with Mid-American, it's like...
He didn't say he didn't follow up. I'm just trying to save a lot of the grief.
Well, I understand that, and I think that's admirable, that you're trying to save grief, but...
No, I mean, okay, uh...
And, and I, it, I guess, to me, it comes down to a council decision. You know, you're taking the city clerk who's been working on this for 11 years, you're taking the mayor out of the position, and you're going to put accounts, a city council person into all of this. Is that, I mean, is that really where the council wants to go? And I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about any one person, but...
Well, the prior communication arrangement didn't work. So, or it didn't work well. I shouldn't say it didn't work, it, it just didn't work.
I showed you everything he sent, and you guys looked at it and agreed with me. What communication didn't work? You saw the same things I saw.
I think, I think, I don't, what I want to do is make a motion that we initiate a new contract with John because he's got the background. Oh, wait, you don't have to do that. My motion is that we initiate a new contract with John Kretowski and set up a communication role that involves a city council person or persons. And Bertie, if anytime you want to attend, that wouldn't be a problem either. And, uh, uh, get him on board immediately. And, uh, let's put a $2,500 maximum on, on how much additional money he can spend.
Okay, you heard the motion by Jane. Is there a second?
Also.
Second by Justin. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Excuse me. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
We had four aye and one negative. Okay, consider City Week participation.
It's eight o'clock, skip it.
Skip it.
Unless you guys really want to discuss it.
Police tell us what it's all about, and tell us some of your...
City Week is an initiative that the Iowa League of Cities is promoting, where cities kind of promote their services to their citizens.
What can we do next month?
Yeah, we can, yes, it doesn't have to be done until August or... That's a week that is, that we have to do it.
Yeah.
Consider attendance at the conference.
And it's in September.
Yeah, it's September 24th through the 26th. Janelle and Jane had expressed interest in going, and I could go and pick up some education credits, too, if I went, but I don't need to go. Anybody else is welcome to.
I don't need to go, it's kind of expensive, isn't it? I'll, I'll back out. I don't know, I thought it was, it's expensive, yeah. Okay.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Not if nobody's going.
Okay.
Well, I thought we had two agents who didn't go in.
No, we decided we just were talking to them.
Oh, sorry. Skip it?
Skip it.
Car show planned, approved proper lease.
Um, I spoke with Todd about that. He's willing to sign a lease. And the only reason I even asked is, I just feel, as him living up there, it's probably good to protect him and his property. So if we could send him a lease, he's willing to sign it.
He'd rather have a lease. That's just a standard thing.
Yeah.
Make a motion, do a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to, uh, extend a lease to Todd's purchase of the car show.
Motion by Judge Justin, second by Randy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmed, motion carried. Concession stand used. What's the deal there?
I guess I'm allowed to talk now.
We have issues with this. Is the concession stand, can you rent it out at any time? We had no clue about this at all. Being an entity of the city.
Give him, give him a little, um, call out a question.
I just want to know, it's an entity of the city.
Entity.
Whatever. It's property of the city, just like the fire station, the library, the museum. Is it allowed to be rented out?
By the council.
By the council.
By any citizen. Is that what you're asking?
No, do you have permission to rent it out? The city council, permission to rent it out.
You have to come before the council, we just set up that agreement.
Yeah, we just did the first permit.
We did the first permit for the ball field. Yes. You, you have to have permission to rent it out.
Okay, I'm asking if you guys have the right to rent it out. Being the council members, do you have the right to rent it out? Because it's the same as the fire department, it's the same as the library. Do you rent them out?
Yes, it's a community building, yeah.
No, I didn't say, it's not an entity.
Oh.
Do you rent out the fire station?
Because...
Do you rent out the library?
Well, it's not really a facility that could be leased out. The ball, ball park...
It's an entity of the town, though.
The answer the council's looking for is these are city-owned buildings, and it's under the city council's control. I think that's the answer she wants.
Okay, all right.
I just want to know, is it, because it's just like the rest of them, do you have the right to rent it out?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so the fire station can be rented out to anybody?
We have an agreement that covers that.
The museum?
We don't have an agreement, so theoretically, if somebody wants to rent it out.
It's just, it's...
Our point is that if somebody wants to rent the historical museum...
Yeah, yeah, they did.
You got to go clean it out so we can rent it?
Go clean it out, well, now, see, that's a different...
Now, I got to go clean ours out so it can be rented out.
Wait, now, wait, now, wait, it's not yours.
No, I got to go move the rec committee.
I know, I'm just saying. Don't go that way, don't go that way.
You're right. The way I worded it is wrong. I got to go move the rec committee stuff.
How many, how much rec committee stuff do you have to move?
Because I'm not, the stuff, the stuff the rec committee went out and got donated...
Is in there.
Is in there. And I really don't appreciate, appreciate it being rented out. I don't want the stuff to go.
It's in the last meeting that it is rented on the 13th. It says nothing about the 23rd at all. And if I remember correctly, we talked, or you guys, I'm sorry, you guys talked about the ball field, the sand being taken out last fall. But you said it wasn't in the minutes, so it was, it wasn't a go. The 23rd is not in here.
So our question is, who's using the concession stand on the 23rd?
Because we planned on it for the...
The car show. The car show committee, I, honest, you guys, the car show committee has the ball diamond, the concession stand...
It's not in the minutes. It's not in the minutes, though. Just like the sand was not in the minute, so it was a no-go, so this should be a no-go.
I think you're reaching, I, uh...
I'm sorry. You can't have it both ways. I just think it's a, and it's nothing against hiring, the person they're hiring out. Our entities of the town needs money, all of them. And we don't want to have to have them come to the city council for money all the time. We have to be able to support ourselves. The rec committee, the car show, the historical society, they need to be able to support themselves.
Well, the rec committee didn't care last year.
We didn't have enough people and enough time last year. And we talked about it last year that we were going to do it this year with you guys. So we planned on it.
Then why won't you add any of the meetings to let us know you planned on it?
When was the meetings? No one let us know.
Didn't think we had to let you know, the meetings are posted.
And if you're going to make money for the town, if the car show, because I think it's in debt to the town, the town had to pay some of the bills off.
That's true.
Wouldn't you put the car show on yourself and put the food, make the food yourself instead of renting it out, or?
No, because that, the person that we're renting it to is giving us a donation.
Of $150. You could have made more than that at the car show to pay your bill out to the city. I'm just trying to be fair.
You're not fair when you're, you're, when one person runs, if one person provides a food for all your, your soccer programs and that, and it's not rented out. You're not fair in that regard.
By the food. Rent it out, we don't rent any of the other, it's not fair, you don't rent the other buildings out, then.
That's not what I'm saying. It's, it's a monopoly, okay, on who you buy the food from.
You know what, you could have got, she could supply the food the same way as anybody else.
Have you even asked her?
We have someone, everybody...
Whatever goes, whatever goes for the city, use for the city.
That's true, every time we do something in the fire department, we don't take bids from everybody. We go to the rainbow we want to go through.
I just think, honest to God, I think we need to help our own out, the entities of the town, so we don't have to ask the taxpayers. The library needs a new bathroom.
Yep. You're right, Paula, you make excellent points, and I can see the differences, the nuances of the differences, I get it. At this point, we can't go backwards. We've already made plans with the car show. The car show had the ability to select who they wanted in there.
But it was not in the minutes. I want you to know it was not in the minutes.
Well, not everything gets in the minutes, guys, and it's...
I know, but the sand was not put in the minutes, but that was to a halt.
Uh, you're right, you're not wrong there, but not...
So we went backwards on that.
Not every little detail of what goes on here gets in the minutes.
How did the, how did the one at $50 got rented out then? And that was in the minutes?
Yes, because she came and asked a special permission. Council had not ever...
Rented out.
Granted a permit to use that facility to someone as a private entity, okay? New precedent. Now we have a, a precedent that whereby, and I, you know, but they're going, still going to consider them one at a time, whether or not they're going to allow this, you don't want...
What if we have something going on there at the same time?
Then you make sure that I know it, so it's on the calendar for the city. That's what we do with the, with the community building and the park, and if you're going to use, if you're going to...
We're not the community building or the park, though. We're in any, just like the museum and the library and...
But if they're going to have something, it's on the calendar. It needs to be on the city calendar, and I keep a calendar for that reason.
But you make a good point about, just like Justin said, that, yeah, the fire department picks their vendor, the car show picked their vendor. You know, maybe we need to look, obviously, we need to look at it, because it, it, it deserves more attention than we've given it.
But not one committee owns it now.
No, no. Just stay away from it.
We're not saying we own it, we're just saying the entities of the town.
The fire department has their entity that they use and maintain. The rec committee uses and maintains that builder, uses the building up there to store her stuff and everything in. The historical museum uses that building of the city's.
You're right.
And now all of a sudden, we get shoved under the bus and we're going to rent ours out.
Well, I didn't know anything about this until today, so...
But that's, that's...
I mean, you're not going to be free-willing to rent your...
That is the same thing, though, that's true with any building in the city. Council can make that decision at any time to rent any building. Even though the fire department, we have an agreement, they can still override that, so...
And it says that in the agreement, yes.
Yes, yes. Council still has full control of every property in the city that they own.
But, all that said, you brought good issues forward. I mean, it is. And at the very least, maybe we need to, we can't fix, I mean, you've got to let the car show have their vendor there. That's, that's the right thing to do. But you brought very good issues up. And Paula and I actually talked about doing some sort of fall get-together with all the different groups, the library board, the rec committee, the car show, when they settle down, and the historical...
I, I am very proud of what we have made this. We are making up money so we can buy stuff we need. And I know there's other committees that come up and ask for it. We want to get together so we can all make enough money to support their own. They need to, I don't want to just give money to someone unless they earn it or work for it. If they can show that they can go out and make money, I'm glad to help them.
But for the car show, you guys were intending on doing a...
That's, yes.
I have a hard...
We should have known, we should have known, though.
Right, but I have a hard...
I'm sorry, we, I'm sorry. We discussed it last year and...
Been non-prob, I know that stuff. I mean, we have the same problems in the fire department. And I, I want to find a way to get you guys up there, honestly.
I also did my homework, Justin, and looked into what was done last year. And there was no donations made last year to the rec committee for using that building or, or any, anything.
How'd you do your homework?
Because the books.
No, I mean, you knew this was coming? How, how the...
I knew what was coming.
Yes, she did, she taught it to him the other day.
I knew we needed to find someone to go in there. And I was wondering if Jason Geterlocker, who did it last year, if they did a donation back to the rec committee, then that would have been taken into consideration. But I figure that we could pick who we want as a, as a group.
I don't have a problem at all. You know, I think we need to take turns when we have things like that with the different entities. If they need to make money, like the library needs a new bathroom. And let them get some money made for a bathroom.
So, short term, August 23rd. So, short term, August 23rd, your points are well taken, but we could, we don't, we're not gonna run dual, that, that would...
That should be up to the mayor, shouldn't it, to say?
No, the council.
Or council? Or vote on it at least?
Paula, that'll damage the events. I mean, if, if, at this late date, and I, I want everybody who says, you know, it's unfortunate, but let's, let's move on to the next thing and let's put it on the agenda and talk about some real protocols and process.
At our expense.
But there are those that would say, you guys are showing up after the fact. We didn't, like Cindy said, we didn't know it was even an issue.
Then why wasn't it brought up? Why wasn't it brought up then by someone else?
Well, I, I can't answer that.
When you tie your soccer things, you don't bring everything before the city. You, you pick who you want in there.
I'm just saying, we talked about it last year.
Cindy, who do you want in there?
I don't want anybody in there, Jason.
It's the rec committee people doing it. Yes, I will say, I provide the stuff. I sell it to them at cost or below.
Yeah.
I understand that. And I'm sorry, Nancy, yes, you're right, it's not on paper, and it's not on paper what I donate to it. And yes, that is probably my old fault.
It's not on paper. I'm just saying, I didn't know anything about it, so I don't know what's going on except that they're upset, so...
Well, council works pretty hard at letting each entity have, have the autonomy to conduct their own events.
I didn't think we had to be here at a town council meeting to say...
And you don't have to.
The concession stand for the 23rd was...
You don't have to write things by the department.
But that's not a rec committee event. If you were having a rec committee event, you guys get to do whatever.
Do what you want.
But the firemen get to do their events and, and that's kinda...
We'll just have to do contracts from now on if we have it on paper.
Let me say something. All these buildings are the city's correct.
Yes.
But the city owns them, they do what they do with them, but the committees don't come to us for everything, so we don't really know what you're doing. And so, that kind of just falls it all up. You know, if you intended on doing it and we know about it, we definitely would've threw somebody else in there, but we didn't have not a clue.
I didn't, I didn't go like, hey, come to town council.
Well, it's because it's the city's though, it's not, it's not the rec committee's, it's the city's.
That would be just like, now, you guys...
You know what I'm trying to say, kind of, I mean, it's screwed up, I know it is.
Someone you guys, the soccer team is saying they want the building, right?
Say that again.
It would be just like them coming to...
Their profit, the rec's nonprofit.
Well, they can still donate though, Jason, but they can still come to you and say, we wanna sell food out of that building at soccer time. It's the same difference, and you'd say, no, that's ours, we don't want it there.
I guess that'd be up to the town council.
No, so we let you decide what you wanna do, Jason.
We let, we let, this is, this is the car show's committee, and that's what they decide it. Say what they wanted, who they wanted to have as a vendor. And obviously, that process, we need to look at, at a city council, as a city council in the future. But the decision has been set, the firemen pick who they want.
They did decide, we talked about it before.
I don't recall the conversation.
It wasn't on paper.
With that concession stand, can I say, who paid for the, extending the concession stand? The remodeling?
The remodeling. That came from the kids' parents that paid for soccer.
Well, and then some of it was a...
Matching, yeah.
Grants, and the city, the city had some expense towards it as well.
Yeah. But, the short-term resolution has to be, the precedent, we've set, and in the future, we need to sort it out, we need to have the discussion, obviously.
We haven't had these things come up before.
No.
Good communication gaps.
Uh-huh. And you know what, you two, and I want you to know this, because I know the council feels this way, thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do with the soccer program. I mean it, you can blow me off for that, but I am serious. I am serious, I'm amazed at the crowds. So, we'll fix it in the future, that's all you can do, go on.
Thanks.
Are we done with the concession stand?
I think we should have a group hug.
Yeah, I know, I know. I know they're upset, and I feel bad too, but I wish you would've approached me sooner.
Next item, money at vendor fairs. Any discussion on the other?
Jeanelle, would you give the city, the city council just a very quick update? Because it sounds like plans are really coming together, and as you know, we've got that issue out there, as, as was just said, that there's money that hopefully a part of it at least will get paid back, I guess, this year and... Well, I'm hoping, I mean, we're trying not to spend really any money at all. But that's what I understand, that you've generated money, correct? That's all I wanna hear, is just a real quick, and do you have any indication what kind of attendance you'll get? Nope. Nope, not at all. Is it fair to talk about the money you've generated thus far? I mean, just say it so they know you've been working hard and... Well, we got $600 from our garage sale that we had in the spring. Yeah, no, I mean, that's in the, in the financials, and that's on paper. And then, of course, we sent out a letter for donations and we got...
You've got 350 today.
Today. Wow. From letters just being sent out. And then, of course, you know, we charge $10 per car.
And Jean is setting up a vendor fair and I, last I talked to her, she had at least four vendors and that's $30 or $40 a vendor, so...
Yeah. Our goal is to get 10 vendors up there, so... Great. Well, you got some t-shirts to sell. T-shirts to sell. What color are they?
Same as last year. Don't you want two?
I don't like those green ones.
Maybe we should plan a day and let's tie dye them all.
Yeah, there we go.
Little ritz dye or whatever that is.
It's optimistic to say that it, we probably, if we get good attendance, there might be some profit that could... I hope to God there's profit this year. Okay, all right. Nobody's willing to go there.
If not, it's probably the end of the line.
Yeah. If we don't make money this year, that's it. I'm done. It's too much hard work not to make money.
And then you make people mad accidentally and, yeah.
Yeah. Next.
Next, approved all his liquor license.
I'm not gonna approve.
Second.
That's approving both of them for both events.
Yes. As soon as she meets all the criteria, by the way, cause it isn't, they're not quite ready for that, but she has to get it done soon.
Okay, okay.
Have we voted?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're done.
I gotta find out all the forms, that's...
I'm looking at the resolution.
Resolution, 4th, C, A.
Make motion to approve, resolution, the law enforcement suspension, laws ordinance.
Motion by Justin, second by Randy, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Make motion to state public forum, there's no public...
Public forum, we're done.
How it works?
Discussion item, public works.
And I have nothing there, but it's not gonna take eight, 10 days to trim trees. So, just say, keep on going.
City clerk.
City clerk, here's your point.
I have just two things. The first one is a note from Todd Partridge tonight that says, could you advise the council that since the dump has been closed, I've seen an increase in hazardous items in and around our dumpster? This week it was tires, last week it was a TV, before that it was empty farm chemical containers and paint cans.
Moves, moves, don't you worry.
This way. We are used to the occasional garbage bag, but this is getting a little much. I know there is nothing you guys can do, but I wanted something formal in case it becomes a problem with car refuse or the landfill. Says, I'm considering moving my dumpster, but that poses some other issues, thanks Todd.
Poor guy.
So, I know.
So, what does he want from us?
Nothing, nothing.
He just wanted it in writing in case the garbage company had a problem with it.
And I, I did forward that to the sheriff's office just to have the guys keep an eye on it, if they can.
One time, we had one tire back in the back of our yard years ago when the kids were small, and we ended up with six of them. People just kept bringing them during the...
How was that, were we putting them?
No. We had to get rid, we had to pay to get rid of them all.
Okay, the other thing is just a little update on what, what we're gonna do about this hail house, and I don't have enough information to put it on the agenda tonight, but the attorney looked at what I sent him, and there's several ways this can go, but he thinks that the, the way this will have to go is that because of, first, there could be an estate involved and I have to get a copy of the original deed, which I haven't had a chance to get. We need to do a lien and a title search, and I need to find out if, in Sack County, if that is a nuisance property, if the city can be the only bidder. But there's a tax sale on it and there would be some redemption to that guy that bought it at tax sale. So, those kinds of expenses are things we have to look at. What he thinks will have to happen is that we will have to declare this abandoned and under 657A10 of the Iowa code, we will have to file a lawsuit against whoever the deeded owner is to prosecute. And, and through an abandonment process, we can eventually get the deed to it. And estimated legal fees for the most expensive, which is that one, is 2,500 to 3,000. So, I'm gonna go ahead and get the next information for him so he can, you know, determine exactly which way we have to go, but I just thought I would tell you what I know from him and...
It's really kinda hazardous anyway, isn't it?
Yeah.
The property?
Yeah.
So, still, that's, that's a little bit...
God, don't be dangerous.
So, anyway, that's the update from there and I will stop.
Sheriff, do your... No, Sally, please, I really don't have anything to report. We met out at the landfill. They are doing some assessment on whether or not eventually, maybe seven, 10 years out, they wanna become a transfer station. So, they're, they're entering, they're entering into assessment phase where a consultant is giving them different options, so they're planning ahead. That's it.
Okay, and we read the sheriff's report?
Yeah.
Okay, mayor and council. What was that, first, next meeting that I went to? What was the name of it?
Emergency management.
Yeah, that was it, emergency management 911 meeting.
Yeah. Okay, Sack County, Hardland, oh, let's see, I gotta get back over here again, wrong damn road. Anyway, anyway, to become, it's a voluntary thing, and there are some fees associated with this, and I can't tell you what all the fees are right now.